Good evening and welcome to the June 13th, 2017 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. And we'd like to thank Tim Riley for typing tonight's meeting for us. Superintendent Falsby, I'll turn to you first for announcements.
Okay, I have a few announcements this evening. The next regular school committee meeting is July 13th on a Thursday rather than June 27th as originally scheduled. The meeting had to be moved to July, so July 13th. The last day of school is scheduled for Monday, June 26th, which is a half-day of school for students. Kelly Brown's students will present. Kelly Brown's a history teacher at the high school. And they will present A Local Lens. It's Histories of East Hampton and Beyond, and it will be June 19th from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock at the EHS auditorium. And if you haven't come to any of Kelly Brown's presentations before, her Local Lens presentations, they really are phenomenal. It's such an educational experience, and the work that our students do is really just amazing, so I encourage you all to attend. And for community members or others who do not have children in our schools and want to receive the superintendent updates, please visit our website at www.epsd.us and click on "Click" to subscribe under "Latest Superintendent Update." Thank you.
So I just want to second what Superintendent Falsby said about the Local Lens program. I've had the great pleasure of going a number of times. I'm sad this year that I will be out of town, but I'm going to sneak over to the high school on Thursday, and I promise to sneak peek at some of the presentations that the students will be doing. They're really terrific work. It's amazing what they pull off between the end of the AP exams, because these are students who've completed the Advanced Placement course and are engaging in these extensive projects. And they're really marvelous, and it's student-centered, it's student-initiated, it's student-directed. Kelly clearly inspires and influences what we see. But some of the most outstanding work of local history that you'll find anywhere is done right here at East Hampton High School. So I encourage folks, particularly now that it can be done in a nice, air-conditioned place. I remember those days when we used to go and be tucked in that little shoebox theater, and it was always hot and stuffy at the middle of June. And they were great then, and they're great in this environment, too. So even if you can only come over for part of it, don't feel like you have to be there right at 6:00 or stay the whole two hours. If you can just step in for 10, 20 minutes, half hour, if you stop in for 10, you'll stay for half an hour. And the students greatly appreciate seeing people in the community come to take seriously their work, so please do. Thank you.
I also have an announcement to make, an update. As you all know, we originally intended to have our EHS investigative work complete by the end of May, and a report ready about this time. And as it turns out, the collaborative needs more time to finish their report. They've asked for more time. So since that's a key part of the superintendent's report, we will be now expecting the report will be finished and available early in July. So we'll be hearing more on that at our next meeting.
At the July 13th meeting?
Yes, I can't say officially for sure that it will be available and presented at that time, but we'll be certainly having some sort of an update at that meeting if we're not at that point. But at this point, the plan is that it'll be complete early in July. Yes.
We do not have any correspondence, but I would ask the committee to vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gift of $250 from Carol LaPlante. She made this donation to offset the student meals program deficit.
So move with appreciation.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. What a unique gift idea.
Yes.
It's a great idea.
Yes, very, very helpful.
And it's an investment somewhere out there. I know, Mike, you're listening. This is an investment, not a deficit. Thank you.
We really appreciate the gift very much, as we do all of our gifts. Okay, at this time, it's the public speak portion of our meeting, so I would invite anyone who would like to speak to the committee to do so at this time. I will ask that you state your name and where you're from, and I would ask that anyone would limit their comments to two minutes.
Thank you, committee, for hearing me. Wayne Duchesne, Federal Street. One of the points I want to point out that will come up later in my conversation is the two-minute limit. What I am asking for is from each and one of you is that we're outside of this committee. We have four meetings a week, two minutes. I'm limited to eight minutes a month. Do any of you hold outside meetings, not a year off, but outside meetings, at a coffee shop and go online and say, "The school committee, this person from the school committee, Nancy, Peter, Marissa, anybody here, I can't see farther than there," okay? But that you have a day or a time that you will sit with us and talk about our problems that we have from the school, okay? I am limited to eight minutes a month. That's all that you allow me. But unless I'm missing something, there's nobody out there that's saying, "On this day, the school committee member will have a session for three hours at our police station, or fire station, or in this building." Nobody says that. How do we get our voice across to you when we're limited to eight minutes a month? That's what I'm asking. Nobody's coming out. And I've been thinking about this for a long time, but one of the reasons I brought this up tonight is because one of my representatives in my hometown of Haydenville, Williamsburg, and Hilltowns, we have a person, a representative, is missing in action. He's been, "Peter, you're shaking your head."
Richie Neal.
Yes, Richie Neal. He asked for a vote, but he's not representing us, he's not asking us for questions. I feel that that's the same thing that this school committee is doing. You're asking for my vote, but you're limiting me to eight minutes a month. Why can't each one of you say that, "I'm going to be here at this day, I'm going to be here at this day"? We have coffee for cops. Why can't we have coffee for school committee? Why can't we do that? You are limiting me to eight minutes a month, and then you shut me down, and that's it. I have a lot more to say than eight minutes a month, okay? But nobody, you want me to vote for you, you want me to go and feel what's going on in the school, but you are not reaching out to the public. You're not reaching out for our say, you're not reaching out for what we want to do. This is it, right here. This podium is all we're limited to. I don't feel, now if I'm wrong, because this has been going on, please correct me and please let me know where I can go on a certain day, but I don't see that happening. You're limiting me to eight minutes a month for the whole problems that the school is having, good and bad, and I want to know why we can't do better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us at this time?
Could you answer that question, please?
It's a matter of procedure. Can we talk about that?
Well, just one minute. I was just going to see if there was anyone else who would like to speak to us at this time. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak to us at this time? Okay, then I'll consider public speak time closed at this point. We don't typically respond to comments at public speak during our meeting. That's not the proper procedure for us, but in this case, I'm going to make an exception. And I'm just going to say that anytime there's any issue with our schools, with a student, with any concerns whatsoever, there's a definite procedure outlined in our policy books that the first step is to speak to either a teacher or the principal of whatever the situation may be. And then if you're not satisfied with that conversation and the outcome of that, then the next step is to speak to our superintendent and arrange a meeting with her. If you're not satisfied with the outcome of that meeting, then the next step is to come to the school committee with your concerns. You can do that a number of ways. You can come to public speak, and we're in the habit lately of limiting it to two minutes because we've been having so many people wanting to speak to us. You're welcome to do that at public speak, or you're welcome to send us a letter anytime. It becomes a matter of public record, and we receive it, we all read it, we all consider whatever information is in the letter, and we respond, hopefully appropriately, to whatever information is shared with us. And thirdly, we've always said, and we will continue to say, you are welcome to meet with any one of us individually. We have been doing a lot of that in the last couple of months. We have had individually lots of meetings with individuals, with a couple of different people, parents, students. We have met with people, I can't even tell you, the number of hours in a week. And we are happy to do that anytime with anyone who's interested. So you're welcome to get in touch with us. We all have the same email addresses where it's the first initial of our first name, last name, @epsd.us. And feel free to reach out anytime. We'd be happy to set up a meeting with you.
May I put out going back there, please? I understand, thank you, what you're saying. Again, what's being missed here is that you're asking me to do the work. I am asking you as a council why you aren't doing the work, why you aren't reaching out to us. You want me to call you. I call you, and you're busy on this day, you're busy on this day. I'm asking each, every single one of you, why you aren't individually reaching out. You want the parents to reach out to you. That's fine. With all the problems, good and bad, that are going on in school, why don't you reach out? I am asking. Like I said, coffee with cops. Is there a reason why each and every one of you can't designate a time in a month and you can put in a newsletter that this representative from the school will be at this place for two hours, and anybody? You're talking about me calling you. If I'm the only person to call you, then I'm the only person to call you. But by putting a message out there saying that the representative of the school committee will be at this place for two hours, come. Why can't you reach out to us? Why do we have to reach out to you?
Okay. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd also like to speak to that. Coffee with a cop, great idea. They came to me to ask me if I would mind if they copied my initiation. I started coffee with the mayor as soon as I got elected, but I'm here full-time. And also what I do is, I now do it, I did it at the coffee shops, I did it with the businesses, and I do it with the Council on Aging. Now meet quarterly with the Council on Aging. I also invite our state senator, our state representative, and our city council president. So that is already happening on the other level. There's a much, a bigger difference between elected school committee members who have, most of them have day employment, and our superintendent has the same open-door policy I have. She is always available. She's here easily five days a week, usually more, for anybody to stop in, give us a buzz, you know, call her, stop in my office, any of those things. But on the other end, as far as school committee, these are basically like your city councilors. They have full-time positions during the day, so their availability might be different. But I can vouch, and I have said that at many of these school committee meetings, that these school committee members have met sometimes three, four hours on a Sunday with, you know, with concerned parents. If parents call them, they have any concerns, they make themselves more than available. I know they've taken calls, emails, and on and on and on. So I actually have applauded them for their efforts many times as being accessible. But again, a different administration. I, as mayor, I'm here full-time. It's a very different thing than school committee members that are here, you know, at their public meetings.
Governor, you and I have spoken about different things in town, okay? And you have been more than helpful for the things that I want. What I'm saying is that what you're saying right now is that I'm not aware of. I don't know how to go to these people. You're saying that people have met on Sundays for three hours at a time. I'm not aware of that. That's pretty much what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay? You and I have met. I've come to your office, and we've had a problem here, we have a problem, and you've addressed that problem. Thank you. But I don't know how to address the school committee. That's what I'm saying, is I don't know how to address that.
Okay, so I hope that I've clarified that for you in what I shared in terms of the protocol for if there's an issue or a concern and the process to go through. So that's important to us as a district, but also the fact that we are available to meet with anyone who would like to speak with us, and we bend over backwards to accommodate anyone else's schedule and make that happen.
Can I piggyback on that? I just want you to understand, and we've tried to explain this at numerous meetings, but somehow it might have gotten missed in, you know, the heated messages of the night. We can only meet in small numbers together, because as soon as we form a quorum, we're in violation of a community.
I understand that. I understand totally.
So what each and every member has done, and I have met for many, many meetings outside of the school committee with both sides of the issue for hours on end at restaurants, at people's homes, and I can't possibly know who wants to talk to us, which is why we ask that you just email us. We get back to everybody, we arrange a time to meet on, you know, some pleasant neutral ground, and you have that chance to have a voice. Sometimes we're able, we've had two members, max, we can have three sit in with someone, and we've done that. And we will continue to do that. We have things that we're trying to work on and bring together for the summer. We have an announcement because they haven't come to fruition yet, but we're certainly available, and I can tell you, I have met with many, many people, and I'm sorry that somehow you didn't hear that on a particular night, but we've really tried to remind people, just email us, and we will absolutely meet with you at some point to give you your voice, because I wouldn't want two minutes to be my max.
The only thing that I would like just to add to that, and I understand, thank you very much for clarifying, but like the mayor said, like everybody on the board has another job. I'm a restaurateur. I work 70 to 90 hours a week, so I have another job, okay? And I'm still coming here and figuring this out, okay? So no matter, if we have another job that interferes with what we're doing on this panel, maybe we shouldn't be on this panel, okay? I am, you can laugh all you want.
But it doesn't interfere if we've been meeting for hours.
All I'm asking is that it be maybe a little bit more clear out in the public, in media, or on Facebook, or on the city council, when somebody is going to be available to hear questioning. You're asking me to go out and search for you. I'm asking you to come out and search for the community. I'm asking you to do that.
Thank you very much. I'm going to have to end this conversation now. We're not supposed to have this kind of dialogue during a meeting like this. So we're going to move on at this point to our subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee?
There is no, we haven't met.
Okay. Policy Review Subcommittee?
We last met on May 23rd to discuss the immigration resolution, which we have sent to our district attorney and he sent back some feedback. So we will be meeting again as the policy subcommittee to review that resolution and make some revisions in response to the attorney's recommendation. And then we'll also be scheduling a meeting. I'm hoping to get together with everyone to schedule it this evening in person. Not scheduling it for this evening, but using this evening to schedule a future date.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
So we can also continue our discussions about developing a new memorandum of understanding for our school resource officer position.
Very good. Thank you very much. Cynthia, do we have a collaborative update?
No, their next meeting is at the end of this month, so at the next school committee meeting, I'll have an update.
Thank you. Okay, Marissa, do we have an education policy update?
I don't have any update for tonight other than the foundation budget resolution is prepared for review, and I think we'll work on reading and passing it at our next meeting.
Very good. Everyone has seen that?
Yes.
Great. Okay, very good. Immigration?
We can just combine that with the policy.
What day?
Right.
Okay, sorry.
No.
All right, we'll be moving on then to our superintendent's update with the school building project.
Thank you. So I wanted to give the community update on where we are with the school building project. At the last school building committee on June 6th, the schematic design for a pre-K to 8 school building was discussed, and Bert Gardner of Kalon Beenick Architectural Firm showed us slides of the projected site of the new school on the current site of Whitebrook Middle School. The building as proposed would be constructed in front of and slightly to the left of our current Whitebrook Middle School, and would not in any way interfere with our football field, which has, you know, friends of football spend a lot of time and a lot of energy and funds to provide this beautiful field with wonderful lights. So we were, I was very strong in expressing my opinion about making sure that that football field stayed intact, and it appears that it will, yes. The plan now is to have the preferred schematic report submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in August and considered for approval at an October 25th board meeting. But before that, two forums will be held to provide the community with information on the project budget and an estimated impact on taxpayers. There will also be an opportunity to see schematics of the proposed building, the drawings. The school building committee wants to ensure the community has ample opportunities to become familiar with what is proposed and able to provide their input. I believe a survey will also be going out to community members to provide another opportunity for input. The forums will be on June 27th and July 8th at 7:00. The forum on June 27th will be here at 50 Payson Avenue, right here in this room. And the location of the forum on July 18th is to be announced. The city council, I believe, is in this space on July 18th. So we have to have another space. In all likelihood, it will be at the high school, but we will be sure to get information on that out as soon as we know precisely where it will be.
Apologize. I missed the time. You said?
7:00.
7:00, thank you.
And?
So it's June 20.
July 18th. And June 27th.
6:27 and 7:18.
Yep.
Thank you.
And the next school building committee will be held at 5:00 on July 11th, right here at 50 Payson Avenue. So we're very excited about giving an update on the school building project, letting you see these preliminary designs, being able to walk the community through the designs and the process, and get community input on what's been done to date. So we hope that we'll have lots of people attend, and, you know, we'll get the information out in every way we possibly can. Any questions on that?
You read my mind. So on the 11th at 5:00 PM, that's, is that open to the public, the school building committee?
Yeah.
Meeting? Okay, perfect, because I've been having some people ask.
Yes, all school building committee meetings are open to the public. They're our regular meeting times when we discuss the progress of the project and things that need to be done, so they are here. They've been in the conference room, but if we had enough people come, we could certainly bring them out here, so there'd be room for everyone.
But planning board's always here, that's why we're in there.
Oh, that's why we're in there, yes.
And that's why we don't have July 18th.
Oh, it was the planning board?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, so we may need to find a bigger space for our school building committee meetings.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest I'm finding from the community.
That's great.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
I hope everyone will spread the word about the forums.
Yeah.
Right.
We're going to do our best to advertise it all far and wide.
And those will be opportunities, the forums, to have your questions, to ask your questions and get your answers, and to get an idea of the next steps moving forward.
How are those going to be advertised to make sure that everybody, the maximum number of people?
We'll put them on our school website, we'll put them on the city website, we'll put them on our Facebook pages, we will also put something in the newspaper. We're hoping reporters will help us advertise that as well. And I certainly will send something out in my superintendent update. We will send out flyers to, for instance, the community center and different organizations around town, probably put flyers in windows of businesses that will allow us to do that. We're going to try to share that information in multiple, many multiple ways.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, we're very excited about it.
You said those forums were at 7:00?
7:00. Yeah. Okay. The next item on my update is school choice application data. I gave you a graph that Lynn Moran, our student records person, developed for me today. Just to kind of give you an idea of the openings at each level and how many have been filled. We had more openings than we could fill at kindergarten. That happened last year as well, and so we did open a couple of more slots before the deadline, and so all of the slots that we had open, eight of them, have been filled for kindergarten.
Nancy, can I just, can you explain?
Yes, it is a little confusing. So all those Xs mean that there are no slots there. There's no slot eight, so if you look at kindergarten, there's no slot nine, there's no slot 10.
Does slot just represent one student?
One seat, right.
Yeah. So there's eight, one.
So you're saying that there are eight slots available in kindergarten?
Yes. And then you see at the top where it says slot nine?
Two.
Yeah.
You see that there, all those Xs, it means there were no other slots opened, just eight slots.
So that means eight students.
Eight seats, right, eight seats, eight places for students, yes.
And this application complete, what does that mean?
That means that all of these people have said, yes, they're coming, but then there's paperwork that they have to complete in order to complete their application. The deadline was last week, I believe, so not all the applications have come in yet.
So the yellow and the green means things are pending for those seats?
Yes, well, the green are all set, and the yellow, they're pending.
Okay.
They're just waiting for the application.
And if it's just blank white, it means that there's so... Of the 41 in total, am I right, that there's one, two, three?
There are 42 in total if I add it correctly.
I teach history for a reason. I believe you.
But I may have counted wrong.
Gotcha.
16 available?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yes, the blanks are the available. So you can see in grade one, there was one seat opened, and there's still one available. In grade two, there are two seats open, and two are available. In grade three, there was one seat open that's taken, none available. Grade four, we have two seats open and two seats are available. Grade three, there were three seats open, there's only one available, and...
That's grade six.
Ah, grade six, sorry.
Gotcha, okay.
Grade seven, there were five seats open, and there still are four available. In grade eight, there were five seats open, they're still available. And grade seven, or grade nine, sorry, there were seven seats open and there are none available. In grade 10, there were three seats open, and there is one available. And in grade 11, there were two seats open, they're both filled. In grade 12, there were three seats open, and there's still one available. Now, what we do have also is more people inquiring over the summer, so if we have seats open, we can put them on a list for those seats as well. And you can see that in pink, there's a pink block there, we have a number of inquiries about grade five, but our class sizes are at the appropriate number for us at this point, and so we don't want to open seats and have our class sizes be too large. That's one of the limiting factors on how many seats we can open, because we want to make sure that our class sizes stay small and the teacher-student ratio is a good teacher-student ratio.
So does this mean that we have, oh, we have four on the waiting list for grade five?
Yes, for grade five.
Okay.
But we don't have any seats open at this time.
How does this compare to where we normally stand at this time of year?
It's about the same. It's about the same. It might be, no, I think it's about the same as we were last year, close to it, yep.
So I have a quick question. Do we typically end up filling them all?
We typically fill up most of them. Grade eight is not a grade that's often filled, because that's the kind of transition year, and families oftentimes wait until grade nine before making a choice to move to another school.
So now, often siblings are almost like automatically in, that there are three siblings waiting, because they're all waiting for a closed grade?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, if siblings want to have a seat, they get first priority, but if we don't have any openings, they have to be on the waitlist until we are able to open a seat. And sometimes enrollments change, so we have a predicted enrollment for the fall, and if we find that the enrollment is less than we've predicted when we open school in September, then we can offer seats at that point in time to people, families who want them, who are on our waitlist. So we're very pleased with the increase in choice in for us, and our enrollment continues to increase, which is unique for this area. Most school districts in western Massachusetts are decreasing in enrollment, so so far, we've been fortunate to continue to increase our enrollment.
So I'm trying to make an inference without the other data, but my initial reaction to this was to be... but my initial reaction to this was to be really pleased about the fifth grade number, because fifth grade...
Me too.
If I remember correctly, from previous years when we've looked at year-on-year enrollment going from fourth to fifth, that that has always been a challenging transition. And the fact that there are no spaces available, that we actually have people on the waiting list to join us in that grade seems to be great. And the fact that for the three spots that we have in sixth grade, so really, in fifth and sixth grades, the two years when people would start, there are only, there's only one space that's unoccupied at this point. And the seventh, eighth, it's interesting, because I wonder if we can do some proactive outreach there. There are, there's at least one school in Northhampton, sorry, there's one school in Northampton that runs through sixth grade. And I wonder if direct communication with those folks, now, I don't know what the residential pattern is, but this is school of choice, so if they can choose to send their child, I'm thinking of the Smith Campus School, right, that maybe that's a target audience to see about increasing the choices in seventh and eighth grade. Just as a thought, so...
We just, we have to be sensitive to, I have to be sensitive to my colleagues in other districts, my other superintendent colleagues. We try to be sensitive to not trying to actively pursue another district's students. But we do advertise in the paper, and we do try to get the word out as much as we can.
So, the public schools are collegial about choice in, it's the charter, sorry, I'm just thinking out loud here, that I hear advertisements all the time on the radio for folks to go to some schools in the valley that are publicly funded, but then, you know, have graduation ceremonies that seem to be not public school-oriented, in my view. So, okay, I take your point, and it's a good point. I'm glad you thought it through further than I have here.
We have many conversations about it, and have over the years.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Okay.
No, oh, do you have a question?
I'm okay, I think I'm fine. I just, I'm noticing that we're two-thirds full, so that's really, that's pretty cool.
Yeah. We're very pleased about that.
But thank you for explaining this.
I'm sorry, I should've started to explain it right from the start, because when she first handed it to me, I had the same reaction. A lot of Xs there, what is that?
After you explained it, it's quite simple.
After she explained it to me, I felt stale. No, Lynn Moran, our student records person.
Sorry, again, just because I was just looking at it, I apologize. But, so, if I'm still processing this, and I'm thinking that if there are East Hampton students at the campus school, we wouldn't be, there would be no perception of poaching. It would just be reminding those folks that they have a great opportunity to come back into the town that they live in to send their kids to school here, in those grades, because we have spaces open. Okay, terrific, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to warrants and payroll.
All right. We have a couple of things here. So, first, let's do them in historical order. Yeah, here we go. I move to approve the school payroll dated the eighth of June, 2017, in the amount of five hundred and two thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second? A motion has been seconded to approve the school payroll dated June eighth, 2017, in the amount of five hundred and two thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And I move that we approve the account's payable authorization for the payment dated eighth of June, 2017, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second? There's been a motion, it's been seconded to approve the account's payable authorization for payment dated June eighth, 2017, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And I move that we approve the account's payable authorization for the payment dated fifteenth, June, 2017, in the amount of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars.
Second? There's been a motion, it's been seconded to approve the account's payable authorization for payment dated June fifteenth, 2017, in the amount of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Great, and we will need signatures. We did, folks were very good about coming in for the earlier, we need one more set of signatures on that. I would make a motion for the, that we adopt this, that we approve. I get it, I, we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of May twenty-third, 2017.
Second? There's been a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third, 2017, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention.
And then, we have a school choice request for ninth grade. So, I would move that we accept Mr. Burke's request for a school choice opening in ninth grade.
Second? There's been a motion, it's been seconded to approve the school choice opening for grade nine. All those in favor? Motion passes. And next, we have a request for a new position, which is an LEAP program teacher. And my understanding is that our director of special education, Sarah Mochek, is gonna come and tell us about that.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, historically, in East Hampton, I've been here twenty years, and we have, over the past five or six, seen an increase in students with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges, particularly at the elementary level. And I looked back at the past four or five years, and when I'm always looking at our out-of-district budget and the students that we need to place in out-of-district placements, there's been an increase, or a significant number being four students in the past four or five years that we've had to, due to their significant special needs, place in other programs outside of our district. And it's a conversation that the superintendent and I have had for several years about our not having a program. We have a wonderful, a wonderfully successful inclusive behavioral support program at our elementary levels, but not a small classroom that could support students with these significant challenges. So, we have, as I said, over the past four, five years, sent a small handful of students out of district in second grade. So, we were faced with a similar challenge this year, with a couple of students, two students in particular, who had, who were really struggling to be successful in the inclusive environment. So, I'm proposing that we open a small therapeutic self-contained program at one of our elementary schools to service up to five students. We're starting, I'm proposing that we start the program with three. Two students who probably would have been placed in out-of-district placements had we not, or will be, if we're unable to open up this program. So, I'm asking you to approve this program. It's not, it's just a reallocation of funds, and it's something that we're very excited about, that I've worked with Allison Rabello on developing. And we are calling it the LEAP program. And it will support students with social, emotional, and behavioral challenges, who, would that manifest in behavioral dysregulation that makes it, you know, really challenging for them to be in the inclusive environment. And the goal of the program will be to teach them skills, so then they can go back into the inclusive environment. And there will be inclusive opportunities with this program. It will not be that they're in a program or in a small classroom all day long. There will be as much inclusive opportunity as they can sustain with the support of the program. Will you, we have a board-certified behavior analyst who works with us in the district, so our BCBA will support the program, our school psychologist will support the program, as will Simon Taylor, who's a consultant that we, we work with through James Levine and Associates. So, it's a new program, but it's one that I find really exciting. I think it can keep kids here, and which is, you know, we're mandated to do, you know, to always look to be keeping kids in our district, to provide them with the least restrictive environment and opportunities to be with their peers and in their home community. So, I'm happy to ask, answer questions.
When you mentioned the reallocation, are you just describing, rather than making the out-of-district payment, we would use those funds for the hiring here?
Yes.
Is it your sense, you've made the educational argument, and for the benefit of people who are listening who may not appreciate how expensive out-of-district placements are, is it, is there, is there, I would imagine this would even save money for the district.
It will save, it will save money. The, I mean, I can give you a figure if you want a figure.
Sure, I think people would be impressed.
The two students that, so, you know, and trying to protect confidentiality. So, sometimes, when students are really, are having significant challenges, what's, one of the, you know, regulation, or part of the law is that we can do an extended evaluation for students. So, that's when we need more information to make good educational decisions. So, what we did in a couple of cases and have in the past is ask an out-of-district school to evaluate our students for us, to help us make decisions about educating them and providing appropriate services. So, a couple of students this year, we, the IEP teams were faced with those decisions. So, we've collaborated with a couple of out-of-district programs to take our students, we're not placing them there, but to take them and help us evaluate them and determine to what, how to best meet their needs. So, if those, if we, so those, the cost, if we had left those two students in these out-of-district programs would have been a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, a teacher, on average, I think, is, we think about around fifty-three thousand dollars, average. So, you know, it's a, it's a big savings. It also allows us to, in the future, if we needed to do this sort of, this type of extended evaluation again, we can evaluate students in our own district. So, yeah, it's a reallocation of funds, but also it's a big money.
And I just want to reinforce the fact that the driver here is that what's educationally appropriate for the student.
Absolutely.
And that the ancillary benefit to the district in the reallocation is that we can use resources that are effective for these students as well as for the broader school program. So, it's a win-win. But the primary driver is education. I realize some people may not hear that, but I think a lot of people don't understand
Right.
the huge, why it's a great investment in inclusion and in the various forms, that this sounds like a hybrid in some ways of that. So, I think it's a terrific idea.
I think we also find that, you know, there are many parents who want their children to stay in our schools. And so, we're really pleased to be able to provide this opportunity
That is something we hear.
For families to stay with us.
So, of the students who, in our district, who attend out-of-district programs, I attend meetings and, you know, multiple times a year. And that is one of, something that parents say all the time, is that they're disconnected from us here in East Hampton, because their child could be in East Long Meadow, or Holyoke, or Chicopee. And the friends, the peer group, are children from all over western Mass, if you're in an out-of-district program. I mean, it's hard for those students, if they want to play basketball here in East Hampton, they don't know anyone. So, it is a, it's a huge, you know, it's an educational benefit, but there is also, you know, a huge social benefit for these students and their families to be here with us in East Hampton and connected to us.
Well, that's where the real social benefit is, that part of their day, they're going to be in the same building as their peer group in their town. And that has a big effect on kids, it really does.
I applaud your efforts, I know how much time and discussion you have put into this process. And I know you've been working with our superintendent, and I applaud your efforts. And I think any time, this benefits, you know, our school district, but it also benefits the parents and the child. So, again, it's a win-win, but I applaud, I know all the time and effort you've put into this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And I just want to say that Ms. Mochek and I have worked, had many, many meetings as we're planning for a potential new building, and thinking about the wonderful opportunities it will provide for us to bring more of our children back and keep them in our schools.
Absolutely.
And Sarah's certainly led that charge, so I greatly appreciate the work she does.
I move that we approve the request for the new position of the LEAP program teacher.
Second? Any further discussion? There's been a motion to approve the LEAP program teacher, it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks for your work.
Okay.
Can I make the motion and adjourn, or do we have?
Second?
Oh, actually, you know, I wanted to make one comment, and I apologize, the gentleman has left. But I took the conversation earlier to mean that, and I, you know, I think it's a great idea if people, I'll speak only for myself, want to informally post a time that they would be available for folks to drop in and see. I take your point, Mayor, to be the good one, which is that with everything that's crazy, it might be irregular, but I almost wondered if there was sort of this miscommunication going on, because I'm always impressed when, you know, this is usually what we have here, is five folks. And, and so, I think it would be terrific to think that if any one of us was to set up shop at one of the local establishments for an hour, you know, every third Saturday or something, and people actually came, that would be another great way to be available for folks. And maybe that would capture some folks who currently aren't connected.
Right.
So, I just...
And I'd be happy to share something with you also. When I started the coffee hours, I was doing actually three a month. The reason I invited our state rep and our state senator is because they actually had office hours that were not attended. They had monthly office hours that they posted in the buildings that were not attended, and, you know, indifferent, and so, what I said is, well, come and join mine. And it's just, was just a way to just be in the public and to be totally accessible. But what I was trying to explain is how accessible this school committee has been.
Right, and I...
And I appreciate that.
I appreciate that very much, because there is a lot of availability.
One of the things I wish I had explained before the gentleman left is I think the reason why we've been meeting individually is a lot of people wanted to share stuff very privately without a public forum. So, on both sides of the issue, people have not felt comfortable to say everything that was on their mind in a crowd.
Especially televised.
So, you know, we've been listening to that piece, and so that's part of why we've been meeting individually in tiny groups, just so that they would feel comfortable.
Yeah, I just want to interrupt, I think this is a great conversation, but I'm concerned about having this conversation when it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And so, I'd like to stop right now, and we could put it on a future agenda. We'd like to have that further discussion.
Thanks, we hear you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded, all in favor? Motion passes.
We do need some more signatures on that.